You ready? Go. Okay, all right. All right, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. It is a meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the 20th of September. We are on the cusp of the the autumnal equinox. That's tomorrow afternoon. But we'll get there. Let's get here first. Okay. Would everyone join me in a flag salute, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible.
Announcements. Are there any additions to the agenda? No? There any declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, et cetera?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Counselor Hook. I just wanted to do an ex-party contact declaration that I have had conversations over social media about one of the upcoming agenda items, probably in the next couple of weeks, the pool.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do you tend to isolate yourself or leave the room?
It's not a conflict of interest. It's just a, or a bias. It's just that I had the contact with people. Yeah.
Okay. I thought I heard contract, but I didn't hear it right. Okay. Let's see, there are no appointments this evening. Is there any public comment, Alyssa?
No, Mayor. We did not receive any requests to do virtual public comment. We did receive the written comment, which was posted to the city's website, where the council agendas were posted and also emailed out.
Oh, okay. All right. Good, good. And good evening, Counselor Ork. Nice to see you today. That brings us all here. And first item of business is a consent agenda for the 16th of this month. So council would like to take some action on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, go ahead.
Make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
This is Counselor Patty, seconded.
Okay. Motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. Alyssa, would you poll the council on that, please?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ork?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you all. I forgot. Keith, how much of the staff is available this evening?
All the staff is available either here or via Zoom.
Okay, all right, thank you. There are no public hearings this evening under general business executive session news media attendance policy. A staff report. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, it was an executive session news media attendance policy resolution, Resolution 1031. Just a little background for everyone. Oregon Public Meetings Law explicitly allows for representatives of the news media to attend certain executive sessions of the governing body as defined in ORS 1926604. When the law was initially passed, there was a clear intent and definition of news media. The challenge that we're facing is recent technology advances have resulted in the development of communication mechanisms that allow for essentially any individual to promulgate or disseminate information and also to claim to be news media. The intention of this and the review of the law and the intention of the law is to find in the absence of a statutory definition of news media that is used in the ORS is appropriate to adopt a policy that implements the intent of the public meetings law related to executive sessions and attendance without precluding attendance by Internet-based or other non-traditional information disseminators that are institutionalized and committed to compliance with the law. In other words, people that are committed to uphold what is allowed and what is not allowed in executive session. The enclosed resolution formally defines news media and provides a framework for other individuals, entities, and organizations to be formally recognized as news media if they're not explicitly laid out in this resolution. The intent of this is to meet the intent and spirit of the ORS 1926604 while also allowing for the reasonable protection and sanctity of executive sessions. This information came available in a review of the listserv and in talking to colleagues. And the assistance was provided by Ross Williamson of LGLG, the city attorney, to provide the framework and the guidance that's laid out in this resolution. It's kind of a unique situation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. But the staff does recommend that the council adopt this as written.
Mayor Porter?
Yes. Alyssa?
I had, I had one question. It was in section, something like the third page, Section 2. My question is if, if we don't give our agendas out until seven days in advance, is it? Maybe it's not a question, it's a comment. I'm, I'm just curious if 15 days before would even be possible for someone to give notice? Someone may not even have anything on their radar of what we might be discussing that they would want to be involved in. And so 15 days and then having 45 days for the city to make a decision, both of those just seem a little long. And so I'm, I'm just wondering why those were put in for those days.
Yeah, I think the idea would be that other entities that wouldn't necessarily qualify would have a chance prior to this event to be, you know, to be concluded in with this. But this is to allow for the city to do a proper review or to make the criteria and to have the time to do so. This was in the framework of the recommendation of the city attorney. I think what I would say in this, there could be a situation where, yes, it would be possible someone would meet the criteria and, you know, an executive session and the council could decide at that point if they wanted to forego that executive session to allow them to be there. But I think what this does is allow a proper framework and with this policy, allow entities that may qualify and are non-traditional to go ahead and be ready in case that happens, but not to put ourselves in a situation where as the rules are written right now, according to the city attorney, anyone could come in and claim their news media and have entitlement to executive sessions, which is a concern.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the extra information that that it was also, you know, recommended by the attorney for that as well. I have a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So how would that look if, say, someone showed up to the meeting, said they were news media? Like, how would that look for the council to be able to grant them access the day of? Would we not start the meeting? The executive session meeting? Would we call, like, an open public meeting first? I'm just curious how that would look.
Well, generally, when you're in executive session, there's a reason and a purpose, you know, stated by Oregon statutes allows you to be in there. And that's, you know, for protection for the various reasons that these are allowed. Oregon is stricter than some states in terms of those requirements. But I, I think what the issue would be is we're setting out this policy. This is a policy that's, you know, being defined. So there is some onus on whoever would want to be classified as news media to be able to do this. You know, to, to take the time to understand if they're a non-traditional media source, to, to look at what their criteria are and to submit to meet that. I, I wouldn't want to necessarily burden or set a precedent that anyone could, could put something in to delay an executive session, especially one that may need to occur just by coming and saying I'm news media and I haven't had time to meet these criteria. But I think the council could decide if they felt it was worthy for more time or consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor, go ahead.
Keith, is the State and Mail owned by the Statesman Journal?
Yes.
So, I mean, essentially the same newspaper, right?
Essentially, these were selected because they currently meet the criteria of who we would publish with or who are media sources inside of that. We wanted to go ahead and call the State and Mail specifically because it is its own entity, although owned with inside the framework of the Statesman Journal.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, kind of a general question and maybe this is more historical and I'm hoping you can answer this. Have we had any requests from any news organizations that wouldn't fit this criteria for an executive session?
We had rumors of a few years, I mean, a few, well, it was a little while ago. I'm trying to think of how, time's a flat circle with COVID, so I'm apologizing. We, we had someone, a blogger who had said he, he intended to come to an executive session, which had me do a phone call with Ross and then led to this conversation in the listserv and ultimately this being brought forward to you for consideration right now. So there was a concern that an individual, and I wouldn't even say a blogger. What I would say is someone who's active on social media, who had said that they intended to come to an executive session as news media. And that's what led down this rabbit hole of being here right now.
Got it, thank you. One more question. So I'm looking at the bottom of Page 2, Section 2 here, subsection C. I'm looking at the first sentence of this and it states, "It shall be the entity's burden to persuade the city of stating by substantial evidence that it should be recognized as news media organization meeting the criteria in Section 2A of this policy." That's pretty strong language for, I guess, the applicant news media, agency. What is staff's vision for the implementation of this provision of the policy?
I, I think what the intent is, you know, there's, there's criteria in here that can be put in place that, you know, allow people to, to be defined in an un-traditional news media source as a news media. But we definitely want the burden of proof essentially to fall on the individual to show that these criteria are there. Basically, what that is, is I would, ooh, I'm not an attorney, so I hate saying this, kind of a strict scrutiny of, of, of the rules, right? So to, to make sure that there is, if there is any uncertainty, reasonable uncertainty, that it would be, the burden would fall on them and not us. So in other words, you know, there couldn't be a loophole, if you will, per se, right?
Okay. The only, the only issue I have with that statement is just the persuade piece. I mean, I, I want this to be as transparent as possible, these criteria. And I am fearful that city staff or us in general would have more discretion than what's specified if they weren't able to quote-unquote persuade the city of stating.
Well, I, I think ultimately the person that would need to be persuaded would be the city attorney, who would, who would determine whether or not the applicant had actually met the legal criteria of this. So I think that would be who this burden would really fall on. I mean, that is part of city staff. It is an appointed official of the council and the mayor. But I think that's where the, the burden would necessarily fall, not necessarily on city staff, on something like this, if it wasn't a clear-cut case as defined here.
Okay, so.
Keith, excuse me.
Yeah.
Bring it right down to this level. What do we do with a somebody that has a newsletter that they regularly circulate or take subscriptions to a community calendar kind of thing?
Well, I, I think what you're
Where do they fit into this?
I think what you're trying to define here is that the news media has ethical guidelines. And one of the things that happens during executive session is they can sit on that as a witness, if you will, as a check or balance, if you will. But there is an understanding that what happens at an executive session is supposed to remain private. And there's an ethical penalty. And potentially the city would have some, my feeling, liability issues if that sanctity was violated. So part of what you want in these situations, and this is what this, you know, commitment was sort of talked about, was to make sure who's ever in that room understands what the limitations that they have based on what the spirit and intent of the ORS are as well. And so this is as much, we're talking about transparency, this is also making sure that those, those discussions remain private and aren't shared outside of that, of that area. So if we're talking about land purchases, if we're talking about a personnel issue, if we're talking about things that would allow us to be in executive session, these are things that wouldn't be out shared with the community and to make sure that could be done appropriately. And that was one of the things that is sort of guided. So we talk about having a higher standard. What we're really looking at is to make sure that there's an understanding that what happens in executive session remains in its, in its true spirit and the intent of the law, which is a private matter until such time as public, if it ever reaches that level.
But there's some hot news here. Land purchase. River diverted to make Scenic Park. That's some hot news.
Well, I mean, one of the cases we had was a situation of a legal matter, right, where the city is discussing, you know, legal options and someone who claims to be news media with no definition by our own city attorney's guidance would be allowed to be in there and would be able to know what led to or what the discussions at the legal ramifications were. So that's where you get into what the spirit of this law is. If you had somebody like Justin Much, who was a reporter for the Statesman Journal and State Mail, come in, Justin no longer is, but, you know, you would have that, that protection and know that he's bound ethically and has liability if he were to violate that and share what was happening.
Mayor Porter? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Counselor, go ahead.
Excuse me, going back to the 15 days in advance and the 45 days to make a determination. Keith, are we talking about business days or calendar days? And I think that, that would be a comment of mine to clarify that. And then I'm also, I've just been kind of thinking about that, that what Counselor Hook said. Is there a way that we can make that seven days instead of 15? Because I, I would agree that we need to make sure that the news media that's in there is being held to an ethical standard. But we also want to make sure that if they do meet these qualifications that they can do in a timely manner if that situation were to arise. So it's, I feel like an accessibility issue.
To the first question, I think, you know, generally, we would default to, and if we can, you can pass, if we get to that point, you could pass this with clarification. We would generally say business days just because those are days we are actually operating and working. So I think that would be the first thing. In terms of timeframe to turn it around, I really hadn't thought of how much time would really be necessary to review the information of someone wanting to come in. I, I can't think of why it couldn't be a shorter period of time. I think the 15 days was just to allow to make sure that, you know, staff had the proper time and to make sure, you know, the proper people were available and could, could be part of that, right? I, I don't know why we couldn't necessarily go to seven days. I don't know if this will be an issue we'll have to face many times, if at all. But if, if you so desired, I, I wouldn't see any reason why we couldn't do it in seven days.
Mayor Porter? Mayor Porter?
Yes.
I, I had a couple of, of things. First off, thank you for bringing this up because it is, I mean, even if it isn't something that will happen often or at all, it is important to, to have this outlined because that could be really putting the city at risk. So thank you for thinking ahead. I think for, for what I'm concerned of is, you know, we're, we're labeling in Section 1, three news organizations. I'm a little nervous about naming organizations when it can look like we have like a bias towards which news sources we're, we're allowing into our council chambers and making it a little bit difficult for other very well-known news sources getting in, in here. So.
Well, I will comment on that. I think the first criteria is basically those are the entities that we currently use when we do, when we do legal notices. So those would be kind of the default order of who we use. So what we're saying in, in Number 1 is we know these because these are already entities that we legally use for, for postings that we do for our budget. And I think there's only been one time we've had to use the Oregonian and that's more in terms of a timeframe difference. So these are the entities that we currently have used and are part of the legal standards that we do. There are definitions in here that do talk about other entities that may qualify beyond the ones we traditionally use.
What are some, Keith, excuse me. What are some of those? And then back to you, Counselor.
Well, we're currently, for, for legal notices at the city, as the city posts, we use, I think, pretty much in the order that you see, State and Mail first, the Statesman Journal, and the Oregonian. And I think part of that is also costs. And many of the legal requirements are, you know, legacies from prior Internet as well. But there's still requirements. And so these are the costs that we have to do. And we've had this issue. We've talked about this with budget, you know, when we do our budgets and other times where we have to do legal notices or postings.
When we're, I'm, I'm trying to expand on this a little bit. When we're publishing bids on things, we, there's a, some, kind of a newspaper or something that we publish in. What is that called again?
Well, there are different entities that we would publish on bids depending on what, what they are. And I'll let Alyssa grab on because this is more her wheelhouse than mine.
I think you're referring to the Daily Journal of Commerce, which is a, that's kind of a specialized newspaper for contractors, engineers.
Okay, that's the one I was thinking of. Yeah. Okay. Counselor Hook, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding the writing well. Section 2, is that, is that saying that basically if, if we can, if they can?
Show that they meet any of these cri, these criteria. Yeah, the following
But do they have to do it in a certain timeline? Can they walk up to the door and say, here, I'm a part of this organization? Or does it have to be pre-approved?
I, I think there are organizations that, like if Coin6 wanted to come in, for instance, that we would, you know, we would know would meet this criteria. If for some reason there would be another professional news organization you mentioned, and we didn't even see names, that, you know, would obviously meet these criteria, this would be pretty easy. I think what the, this policy is really getting at is other entities that may not necessarily on first blush meet some of these criteria and be able to do that. And that's kind of the recognition of the changing landscape for news media, right? So it could potentially allow for other entities that work with traditional news media to, to meet the qualifications. And I think that's where you're really getting into Section C and that. If, if it isn't one of these entities that is sort of a traditional one, that they would have the burden to show some of the criteria or to show that they can meet the standards on here. So it's just not necessarily a blogger coming forward and saying I'm news media.
Yeah, I think I'm, what I'm not understanding though here is, let's say that someone from KATU or somebody like that shows up. They don't come in an actual, like, KATU van. They just show up in plain clothes. They've got their press badge. What, what I'm wondering, the difference is here is I see in Section 3 that they can come and be persuaded, they can persuade the council, but they have to have either a press badge or a recently published news article or a letter on letterhead from an editor. Like, they have to do that. But what are we doing when that KATU person comes up in their plain clothes to verify that they're actually a legitimate news person showing up for this? And why can't we do that for the other person as well that maybe isn't a part of something as big as a news station up in Portland?
Well, the traditional news media would have identification. I'm not aware of, of any time where
Right, I'm saying, but if the other person just, if, let's say, somebody from, I don't know, it's like a, a smaller publication or even a freelance, a freelance journalist that has a press badge. If you have KATU with their press badge and you have this other person with their press badge, are we only letting KATU in?
What the, what the policy says is a press badge or identification issued by the, by the recognized news media organization plus proof of identity such as a driver's license. So what they would need to do is show their press credentials, which they all have, and then they would need to show an ID showing that it's them.
So what defines a recognized news media organization?
I think it's the traditional news media that we all think of in terms of publications or, or TV news media would, would fit those criteria.
For me, that's a little bit too, like, murky. This is kind of, you know, First Amendment rights, free press. I like the idea of the policy. I don't think it's quite there yet.
I think what you might want to say, if that's where you're at, is to have the city attorney, because this was reviewed by the city attorney and the language does come from, from a city attorney. So if you're uncomfortable with that, you know, unfortunately, the city attorney isn't here. I'd, I'd be happy to let him know and to have him, you know, be present at the next meeting so you can, you can try to address this and he can talk about this in a, in a more, in those more specific ways.
So what we're doing, if I understand this, is that the responsible press is going to be at our open meetings and then if there's something, they need to be at a executive session. They establish themselves. It's the irresponsible press that we're, we're trying to kind of say stay away.
Well, in my eight years, we've never had press show up to any executive session.
I know.
So. But what we're planning on here is that possibility or the situation that I, I said earlier where without this policy at this time, according to legal counsel, anyone could walk in and claim to be news media and would be required to attend your executive session. So now that we have this cat out of the bag, I would recommend not doing an executive session until such time as a policy's in place because anyone could show up. But I think we could definitely have this on the next agenda item with the city attorney hopefully present or represented from their office just to answer more of those legal questions about the language.
So you're suggesting we just table this for tonight?
Well, and, and also, I mean, I, I think the feedback of what you would like the city attorney to try to address in terms of, you know, the questions as the policy is written, what course would be helpful so, so the city attorney knows, you know, what to be prepared for, what, if any suggested changes that would happen would come from this.
Let's do suggested changes then.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Counselor Patty. I have a suggested change that I'd like to review real quick with the city manager. On that sentence that I read aloud, I'd like to change persuade to meet criteria of. And I would like to hear from our attorney at the next meeting what potential pitfalls of this policy there may be in his opinion with that change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I, I've made a note on the, just to be formal here, on Section 2C to look at changing the number of days, of business days, from 15 to 7.
And then the 45 days, that's nine weeks if you're doing business days.
What to do with that, Counselor?
I mean, I, if you're looking straight at that at calendar days, then you're talking a month and a half. So putting that back down to 15 days? No.
Calendar work days, what, just 15?
I apparently can't count. 30 days.
30 days, no fair.
Well, 30 business days.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, one thing. Mr. Mayor? I, I think along those, on that, on that same section, I'm not sure, and this would probably be a question for legal counsel, but I'm not sure of the reasoning for giving the city that long to make a determination. It, it reads like we could not decide until after the meeting they're attempting to attend.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a reason for that or what, so I guess that would be a question for the attorney.
I mean, yeah, I.
I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily have a length of time in mind, but I don't know the reason for why we would give ourselves an excuse to leave them hanging for that long.
I think, I mean, just to talk about it again, it's okay. I mean, I think with news media, that would be more traditional, it would be easy for them to come and attend. This is more for people that are sort of claiming a non-traditional news media, and so to have time to properly review some of the criteria that would be required, I think, is part of the reason for that, but I mean.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just saying, if we leave it as is and they submit 16 days before the meeting and we have 45 to make a decision, it seems like that gives us a little power to kind of ignore them longer than we should. It doesn't seem like it, I can't imagine any entity having any information that would take longer than a few days to review. So I think that, but I guess there's got to be a reason for that, and that'd be a question I want to ask the attorney.
Okay. What to do with that, Ben? Counselor?
Yeah, this is language that I pretty much just took, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just, it was added as a note to review with the attorney.
That's, can I clarify? If I understand what Counselor McDonald's.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Is saying, is to ask the city attorney the length and what?
What's reasonable?
What's reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Sorry. Okay. So I would like to see a really clear definition of recognized news media organizations. And then also a process for how we're going to decide the day of if somebody shows up, if they are considered a recognized news media source or organization. Because it also says, you know, even if you are a recognized, a representative of a news media organization that's recognized, then you still have to go through this process of providing substantial evidence to the city of Staton.
It's a press badge and a recognized from a news media organization plus identity is what you would need to provide.
Right. So I don't understand why one press badge is more, holds more weight than another if the recognized news media person already has to be either part of a major, like, or part of one of these organizations that has ethics that they follow, or one that we use for public notices already, or that it's a, let's see, a continuously published broadcast and transmitted via the Internet type of news media source. And another thing, I don't, I'd like to see that regular reports on activities of the city of Staton or matters of the nature under consideration by the city of Staton. I don't see why that needs to be in there. I just feel like this excludes a lot of, of press that should be allowed in here because that is their, that is everyone's constitutional right to have them in here. I understand having guidelines for that, but I'd still like to see a process if somebody shows up the day of, that there's some type of way that they can still enter the building.
For traditional news media source, I sincerely don't think in any way that'll be an issue. I think what the issue would be that you're talking about would be someone who would claim as a non-traditional media source. Because, because the traditional media sources would have the information that would make it accessible for them to be here on the day of. And traditionally, news media has, from my experience in the past, and again, in the eight years I've been here, we haven't had news media here, but they will notify of an intent to come prior so that, you know, they're aware that they're going to be there and accommodations are made for them. So.
Right, but if they pick it up.
This policy really isn't going to be a burden to anyone right now who would fall under, you know, what would be a recognized traditional media source. This, what this policy is really getting at is those new entities that may meet the criteria or the spirit of an tent, but do not fall under that traditional type of guideline. And that's where the review period and some of the other criteria are in place. This policy gives me zero concern in terms of a traditional news media source, because all of those individuals and entities would understand what would go into, what would have the things. So if they would show up, they would show up with their press credentials and an ID and anticipate and know what that is.
So it's my understanding that in your eight years, you haven't had someone want, like, show up actually to sit in on an executive session. So I don't know that there's enough data to really say that they would for sure give advance notice that they were going to come. If they found out about a topic that we were talking about the day of and wanted to come down to sit in and listen and witness the discussion, there needs to be a path for that for a reputable, for even, for one of these recognized news media organizations where they don't have, I mean, I just don't see a process here of how someone can show up the day of at the meeting and be cleared to come in. And I think we need to have that accessibility to the press.
So the press badge, so number three A I says a press badge identification issued by a recognized news media organization plus proof of identity.
So, but who is looking at that? What is the, where's the protocol of like how you're going to verify that badge isn't like fake or, I mean, I just don't see, I don't see a lot of clarity here. And I would like to see more.
Yeah, I think at this point it'd probably be better to have the city attorney here. I don't think we'll be able to get to a resolution, and that's okay. And then maybe they can assuage or create language that will assuage the concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Hey, I have two items, a housekeeping item, because I like those. If, and then I've, I've got to follow. The first one is, for those executive sessions, if there's a public records request in the realm of transparency from one of these reputable sources, that they want to get a copy of the transcript, do they want to get a copy of that? Is it our city attorney that does redaction? Are those not public information?
For an executive session, there could be a time where they would eventually become potentially public record, not always.
Seven years or whatever.
But it would go through the city attorney or public records law, and she handles that, and I'll let her just speak to that because she knows it.
Yeah, and really for the executive sessions, the only, I mean, we have the taped version and that stays private, but there's no transcription done or anything. I have a record that shows who was there, what the executive session fell under for ORS, and that's about it. And I attached the opening statement to that. And, sorry, there's a fly on my nose. And that's, that's really it. And so if it came in, if we had to release something, it would be, and it would be exactly what they see on the meeting notice. I mean, there's really no other information.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other one is just sort of a philosophical, which is, I just want our city attorney to know that I appreciate what it is that he's trying to do here. And we live in a very troubling world where disinformation is becoming a problem, and there's a very real question to Counselor Hook's point about where does the First Amendment start and stop with regards to disinformation? And we're living in a pivotal time where that's a very real conversation. And I will just share with you, if you go out to the Department of Homeland Security, if you go out to the FBI, if you go out to any of these where they release general information about state-sponsored disinformation campaigns that are very real. And, and this is, this is not me being conspiracy theory, this is documented government stuff that's coming out of the intelligence community where there are influencers on social media who will take money to take whatever it is that disinformation chunk is and take money to put a YouTube video together, to post Facebook postings. This is all fact, it's available on the Internet. Like I said, don't go to YouTube to look this stuff up. Go to the FBI's website, go to the CIA's website, go to Department of Homeland Security, any of them. There was a campaign, for example, in 2016 called Grizzly Step, and this is public information, I'm not sharing anything that's classified. So the idea that we're allowing people who may have intentionally, you know, or have bad intentions coming into these meetings is something very real. And I don't, I think that as we get into the details of it, that I would, I would just caution that we don't lose sight of a very real problem that I think the city attorney is trying to address.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else there? Shall we just defer this until we've had the city attorney look at it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just did really want to express that I do appreciate the spirit of the policy. It is very important. And I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable not addressing it tonight because of the things that you had said, Keith, about, you know, we probably shouldn't be having executive sessions until we address this. So I realize that it's an important thing to have in place, especially now that we've discussed it in a public meeting. But I just want to make sure that we do it the right way, and I don't think we're quite there yet. It's, it's good, it's just not where I think, I think it may put us at risk for constitutional issues.
Like I said, I, this was written basically by Ross with me filling in the blanks, so I think it'd be better at this point to have him come in and talk about why he made the decisions or the language he used.
Okay, we can either chew on this some more or we can defer it until we've had our legal counsel look at it.
I think it's, I think it's fine to have legal counsel look at it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. Let's just, let's just defer it.
Okay? All right. Good. Step in the right direction. Okay, next item is annual TMDL report. Lance, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's good to see you after a few weeks off. Tonight I bring before you TMDL report for 2021. We generally put this in the consent agenda. Tonight I was asked to bring this and present this to you, not personally, but through Zoom. The TMDL is an annual report that the city provides to the DEQ. It's part of the, I'm just going to read the two, first paragraph, the first two paragraphs. Because it's pretty clear once you read those what this is. As part of the watershed approach to water quality problems within Oregon. The state of Oregon developed a total maximum daily load, TMDL, and water quality management plan for each water body. We in Staton, we have North Saniam River, Mill Creek, which dumps into the Willamette River. So we're part of the Willamette River, TMDL. And that TMDL stands for temperature mercury. We've got temperature mercury sediment and bacteria. The United States EPA approved the Willamette Basin TMDL in '06. The Willamette Basin TMDL, the city of Staton is listed as the management agency. Meaning we review, we have to craft the report annually and prepare a matrix to show how we are doing our part to meet the requirements of the DEQ for each one of the factors. We do this annually. I think, I don't know how much more I want to get into the text of this. Really what we're looking at within the waters, we're looking at the salmon, we're looking at the North Saniam, we're looking at the main canal, the power canal. What we're looking at is temperature of the water, the mercury in the water, the bacteria and the sediment in the water. And we, in the Public Works Department, do a variety of testing throughout the year. And at the end of the year, we compile all that information and supply it to DEQ in this matrix. And it looks like a matrix in the last sheet of this report. It tells you basically what we do every year. And every five years, we have to update this matrix. And there's a couple of areas that I would like to point out. I think this is one of the reasons Keith asked me to do this versus the consent agenda. Because there's some very, there's some items here that cost, you know, quite a bit of money for maintenance annually. And I'm not sure the city council or the mayor is fully aware of what we have to do annually to meet these requirements. So I think it's a good idea just to bring it to the forefront so you guys know what we're doing. But number two on your list, you look at the far left side of that matrix, and it had numbers going all the way down. But number two, DEQ wants us to be looking for more property to purchase for stormwater detention ponds and basins. That's part of our master plan, we show probably 10 or 12 in the city. We constructed one last year, and I think it was close to about $2.5 million. And we had to borrow some, nearly $700,000 to finish that pond. But DEQ is still looking for us to find more land and build more of those. I have tried over the last several years to let them know that we're a town of 8,000, we're not a city of Portland, where money grows on trees. And we had to borrow $700,000 to build the one and a half. So if they're looking for us to go out and start borrowing more money, then it's probably going to be a while. And that in essence is what I've been telling them for the last three or four years. I do want to point out that they have the ability to find us if we don't meet these criteria. I don't know if they will. I just want to point that out. I've reached out to our attorney a year or two ago. I've reached, talked to consultants about that, and they do, they have the ability to do that. The state, and they're going to, via the federal government, EPA. Item six also, it says we're supposed to have a free tree planting program for our citizens. We've never had a free tree planting program for our citizens. So I guess that's something that we're going to have to develop, maybe get some sort of credits from Marion County. I reached out to the Water Control District and the North Saniam watershed basin, watershed council. They don't have a free tree planting program either. They say they get their trees from grants through Marion County, so I guess if someone in the city wants to get free trees for whatever purposes, we're going to have to try to work through county. Annually, if you're going to item 15, this is something that we have been doing since I've been here, I think we put in seven or eight, nine pollution control manholes. There was not, there wasn't any in the city until 2015, and we've since put about nine in. We'll need to continue doing that. We also, item 14, this is where we start talking about sediment in our storm system. I think I gave town council and the budget committee, the budget hearings, the last three years, talked about how many, how much storm line and sanitary sewer line we need to clean in TV annually, which is quite an expense. I think we're in the neighborhood of $350,000 to $400,000 we spend on cleaning and inspecting our sewer lines via a television camera annually. And this is where it comes from. This is the DEQ telling us we have to do that. You can see it right there. The other, the other item I wanted to point out, and the reason we bring this to council is item 25. It says, public participation presented TMDL to the city council for approval. And we need to do this annually. And I will be submitting the tonight's agenda with our application, our permit, probably later on this week. And really, this concludes what I had to present for you guys tonight. I will take any questions that you have regarding this. And at the end of this, I will need to get some sort of approval from the elected council. You did and approved it.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to kind of jump on to Lance on the reasons we, I asked to go ahead and present this. I mean, one of the things that we have seen as Lance and I have attended meetings in the state is that requirements for DEQ are becoming more and more significant and burdensome, and especially for smaller communities. And that's in a variety of areas. And this year Lance and I had conversations of concerns of the approval of this as we continue to see this happen. As the city reaches 10,000 people, that will be another major milestone and will also trigger other significant expectations from the state as well. So I wanted to bring this forward as just to put it on the timeline for the council. So I wanted to bring this forward as just to put it on the timeline for the council and the community, just to understand that what my concern is, and I think Lance would agree with this, is that we're seeing each year that there is a increased expectation on the city without having necessarily funding sources in place to cover these. I do want to mention the trees really briefly since Lance decided to bring that up. Street trees are the, one of the most unpopular things we do in the city. Every time we do a new road, we put in street trees. I hear from the community unlike any other event we have done. So I hear a lot of things on social media about what the city hears about, but what I actually hear about is street trees and the passion and the dislike. And I think of a conversation with the former mayor Jerry Abud, who was passionate about street trees and went door to door and basically told me that everyone told him to go away. They did not want any more trees. So the free tree program might be something we can implement and not have any cost because so far what we've found is, and some of you are nodding and laughing, so I'm sure you've heard the street tree arguments too. So I don't think I've been called quite as many names as when we have tried to do street trees. And Lance, I know you have felt that way as well and dealt with that burden. So hopefully in the long run, people understand the long-term value.
Yeah, I think we're not going to get away with trees. I think it's going to be more and more prevalent as we move forward in time because of the heat that we are experiencing. People in cities and counties are moving towards ways to reduce heat in cities. And the way to reduce heat in cities are things like narrower streets, less pavement, more trees to reduce that heat index. And that's pretty popular. I think it's not going away. Look at Salem. Salem will be completing there. Their program in November, it was quite substantial, much like the master plan, but it's four ways to reduce heat. There's a term for it. I'm forgetting it unfortunately. But it's only going to get greater and we're going to be looking at a lot more. And with that, I'll take any other questions.
Yeah, they talk about a canopy. What they're looking for is a canopy to kind of shade and do that. So, but I, the answer is a specific term, but I can't remember what it is either.
Mayor Porter.
Whatever happened to the three basin rule? Turn it off. Okay. Whatever happened to the three basin rule?
Nothing. The three basin rule actually doesn't help us at all because what it says is regardless of what we're doing, that we're not, they're looking at the total basin as far as what's coming out of that. So it really doesn't, it just makes it more stringent for us and it's going to get worse.
Also with regard, Lance, with regard to trees, that ice storm in February didn't help our, our tree status in the community. And tonight on NBC, the evening news, there was a blip about inner-city communities of color are severely impacted by the lack of trees as compared to their, their more suburban white neighborhoods. So all kinds of.
There's an actual study that was put out 45 days ago in the city of Portland, there. On the east side of the river, someone actually did a study and talked and they actually, they went out and they determined what the heat index was on the east side of town in the four neighborhoods versus the west side of town. And it was quite substantial. And that goes on all over the country.
Sure.
Again, I think it's going to be more and more of a prevalent issue regardless of what people's opinions are of trees. I think we're going to be hearing more about it.
All right. Other questions and thoughts? Thank you, Lance. Anything else, folks?
Mayor Porter.
We need to help him with this. Go ahead. Somebody.
Counselor Hook here. Lance, I was curious about if we can partner with any like nonprofits. I know when I planted trees with the Rotary Club in Salem, we partnered with Friends of Trees. I don't know if they partner with cities, but have we looked into options like that of where it's not even really a cost to the city that it's just, it goes along with their mission and vision of what they want to do in the world?
No, absolutely, counselor. We have been doing that in the past. I think the last time we did it was like two or three years ago. We went down and tried to plant trees down at the riverfront park. We've got high school folks involved in the parks board. They have spent substantial time trying to get trees to grow down there. Unless you have a water supply that is actually feeding those trees also long, we've never got anything, bro. They've all died. But yeah, we worked with North San Antonio Water Shed Council. We worked with one of our former parks board members. He works for the Forest Service so we can get as many tree savings as we want from him. We have, but here's the issue. It's trying to find people that want to spend their time going out planting trees. There was a time a few years back that one of my parks board members would purchase all the trees and I think Jerry Abud was part of that program too, where he donated money. They'd go out and buy trees and they went into the neighborhoods. I think Quail Run was one of the last ones, counselor. And no one wanted street trees. They couldn't give them away. And you know, which is one of the reasons I think we started doing capital improvement projects and doing streets that we made that part of our program. So at least the city can put them in, the city can start them. We got a lot of pushback. But I'm going to tell you, you know, he hears about pushback. I'm going to tell you, we're out of sight. I would say 70% of the people like the trees, but you only hear about the ones that don't because they're the loudest. And I will, that's what I will say. 70% of the people were out putting those trees in, they liked the trees. Now they don't like maintaining them and that's really the issue. They don't like leaves falling in front of yards. They don't like leaves in the car, things like that. And those things that we need to address either by more frequent street sweeping or something. But again, you know, we're going to be seeing more and more of that in the future.
I was, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor? I wasn't planning on talking about trees. I think something else that's important is, and we aren't the only community that was pretty common, former entities used to plant trees without consideration of what the tree was going to grow up to be and what the root system was. And today there are these wonderful guidelines of where you want to plant trees and what kind of trees best fit. So we can get street trees that will bloom but maintain under power lines or will have root systems that won't be as invasive. And so I understand there's been a history, state is not the only community that didn't have the foresight, but you know, we have grown. And so we have a tree program and a list that we can use that is approved and takes into consideration native trees and their growth patterns so that they, when you plant them, they fit the space that they're actually supposed to be in. So going forward, we can do that. I think a lot of the animosity is because improper trees were planted in improper locations and long-term led to some challenges. So in the future, I think those will be addressed just by planting the proper trees.
Hey Lance, how, how long ago did you guys go through and try to get rid of, or like not get rid of, offer trees to the community?
2016 or so.
Okay. I'm just wondering like with, you know, everyone being online more because of COVID, that if we had like some type of social media campaign and published it to the community groups, it might get maybe a little bit more traction, more people interested, more eyes on it right now or?
We do have the free program. That was one of the things on item, I printed this out really small. One of the things that we do is that we provide information about the tree planting programs that we do have in our community. So people, and we have brochures at City Hall, and we have brochures at the Public Works Office for that. I believe they're online as well under Public Works. But you're right. I mean, we could go out and start promoting more of that to see what we can. I do want to point out that the city wants to take on this without getting free trees or grants from somewhere. Any more, it's going to cost you about $600 bucks a tree to put in the ground. So I want you to be aware of that. It's not something that our street fund, while it is better than it had been, $600 a tree, that doesn't go real far. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah, Lance, thank you for bringing that up because I, I don't, I feel like part of the responsibility of our residents is like to be in this town is to want to put in a little bit of work also in, you know, in front of, in their own neighborhoods. And so that's kind of why I was asking about that Friends of Trees, and I'm sure there's tons of other, that's the only one that I know the name of because I was part of like planting trees with them. That's the only reason that I know their name. But I'm not saying that they're the only nonprofit out there that does this. But can we facilitate some type of like inviting them into the community to maybe help us invite the community to put together a planting day or something where we're not the ones that are planting the trees at $600 a pop? Because that's definitely not in our budget considering we just went through this whole budget twice. So I would just, I'm just throwing it out there that it would be nice if we could look into maybe some different nonprofit groups that are passionate about getting more trees planted because I think that they might like to be invited out here maybe.
I think that's a, you know, it's a wonderful idea. That's something that we can work towards. The one thing I will point out is unless, well, I won't even point it out because I don't really know. I was just going to say parks, things like that. We can, we can plant trees all day long in parks as long as they're spread appropriately and so forth. But you know, putting trees in front of people's houses, that's a whole different game there. So that's something we have to get the community involved for sure.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on a different topic of trees, than trees. Okay. Number two, about the DEQ wanting us to still find more land for detention basins even though we're still paying off a $700,000 bill for the last one that we did. What do they mean by that we need to continue to look for property and financial resources? Like what does done look like for DEQ? Because.
That's a real good question. When you find the answer to that, please share that with me.
Wonderful.
I don't know. I tell you, since I've started here and working on this TMDL, DEQ, and then Keith said it, and I'll just reiterate it. It's not just this TMDL that I do annually. I also have an NPDS permit which is for sewer treatment plant. I have to deal with that five, every five years and I've done two of them now. I just got our permit back from that and I had to spend $40,000 to put a staff agent in the river to monitor where our outflow dumps into the, this North San Antonio channel of the North San Antonio. It's been, our outflow's been there for 20 years. But this year, this year they wanted to put a staff agent at a cost of $40,000. So what my point is in saying that is that they find ways to make more requests of the cities. And I don't see that going away as a matter of fact. The joke that goes around amongst engineering consultants, since I've been doing this for 25, 27 years, is that environmental restrictions are only going to get worse and they have. I don't know what else to tell you on that. As you can read at the end, I think my comment to them, Mr. Mayor, is that we have a 20-year, $700,000 loan that we're paying off on that and I don't foresee us looking to be able to find the funds to construct one of those in the very near future. What we can do is find ways in areas that we can build small ones, like along Kendall Way. We put in a soil detention facility along the street side. That's a small detention area. When we do developments, we put in detention, we make that a requirement, put in detention basins, four-year development. Now, those are detention basins for individual developments. They're referring to as regional wide detention bases that are shown in our master plan, stormwater master plan. And there are again, there's like 10 of them throughout the city and urban growth boundary. I think one of the things that we'll be looking to do in the next two or three years is updating that stormwater master plan. In the hopes that that will reduce the amount of those master detention facilities that are shown. Because I think as David can attest to, when we did our master plan for wastewater this year and it was based on accurate population growth indexes, we lost a lot of, we've lost a lot of projects that were priority one before that are not priorities anymore because of that population increase and that growth factor. So I'm hoping when we do the stormwater master plan, update that, that some of those detention ponds that are shown from 2006 just magically disappear, narrows our focus and we can start addressing the issues that way.
I'm going to jump onto something Lance was talking about because we talked about the stormwater detention facility that we did build and we're talking about the $7,000, $100,000 loan we took out. But it's missing also the component of, we had a $1.5 million grant as part of that too. So that total project is actually $2.2 million. And that's where these burdens coming on can be so challenging in terms of finding others. You know, that was a $2.2 million project of which, 1.5 we received a grant. The second component of this, and Lance can speak to this, part of these executive sessions we had was trying to find land that would work for a detention facility. Most of Stateon is in a situation where the groundwater level is quite high and so it's not possible to put detention facilities in. So one of the other big challenges we've had is finding areas, A, that will be acceptable and B, that are available or something that we could actually have the ability to purchase. So I think there's a couple of things that are really crucial is the cost, the cost we've already bearred and then the challenge going forward of finding spaces that will be viable space to even put these in. Lance, anything you want to add to that?
No, as the days fly by with the roundabout project and we put some pseometers, we did some stormwater analysis down in industrial basin. The sites that we potentially looked at for detention basins, they're slowly going away because of groundwater. I will say that. So we'll be looking harder and harder to find areas and due to the groundwater and the high level of the groundwater, meaning as close to the surface as it is, we need more area. So we have to buy instead of three acres and going down eight feet, if we can only go down four feet, then we're going to need to buy 15 or 20 acres to detain the same amount of water. So that, that's a difficult issue that we're going to have to try to resolve. And we're working on it. It probably won't happen right away, but I think the next step is to probably update the stormwater master plan, see where we sit and then focus on trying to come up with a plan of attack to resolve some of those issues. So I need to go get into weeds on that. I apologize really.
Lance, I just want to tell you thank you for the work that you do because this is a little, I'm just going to say this is ridiculous to expect us to have to put ourselves in more, more debt potentially. It was amazing that we got the grant that you guys worked hard for in the first place for the one that we do have. So to think that we're being asked this soon to continue looking for them when we've incurred such a debt from the last one, I mean, there should be, there really should be something that just is laid out in here saying, if you already have incurred debt because you've put one in, all we're going to ask you to do is find ones that can be fully funded through a grant.
And that may be the way we end up, you know, doing some of these future, counselor, through grants. We'll be looking.
How far down would you have to go if you dug out the grade school playground to make a detention basin? a detention basin?
The grade school playground, which we're talking about, middle school to grade school.
Grade school, first and third.
I don't know. I don't know. I haven't put a pseometer up there. No, I don't know where the groundwater is. Um, you know, it's funny, the groundwater in Staton varies depending on where you're at. Uh, right there at Fourth, um, in Virginia, we had the little fourplex going there a couple of years ago. Um, I had uh, the, the developer there, he didn't want to put a pseometer in the ground, but before we gave him a building permit, I had to go out and dig down with the backhoe. And I had to go down twelve feet, and he didn't have water. And yet, I go over by the middle school and I can go down two feet and hit water. So it just varies wherever you're at, out in the industrial way. Um, we put three pseometers out there, just south of Shaft and west of Wilco, and it ranges anywhere from three feet below the surface to five feet below the surface. That's it. And that's our big area, really, for uh, finding available land. Um, it just varies. And uh, you know, and that's why when we have a developer come in, um, the first thing really out of my mouth when I'm meeting in a pre-op, you probably should go put a pseometer in the ground and determine where your groundwater is, determine you what, if any stormwater management facilities you can construct. Um, and make sure it's feasible for the amount of money you want to spend before you go and start spending money on engineers. And, and that's, you can, you can talk to Mr. Fleisman, that's, every time we have a pre-op, that's one of the first things that we talk about.
Well, as maybe silly as it sounds, I, I just thinking of, you know, open areas in the community that could um, basically become detention basins part of the year. It doesn't rain all the time, as we've seen for the last, what, four months? Um, world's drying out. And uh,
Not in Staton.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. At least the groundwater, groundwater's not.
Yeah. Anyway, okay. Thanks Lance.
Thank you. Uh, you'll need to approve this. I just want to make sure that you guys do that, so I can make that note to DEQ.
Or not approve it. It's up to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'd like to move that we approve the 2021 TMDL report matrix as presented.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty. I second the motion.
Okay, Council Patty, thank you. So a motion in the second to approve the 2021 TMDL report matrix as presented. Uh, questions or thoughts? Any more tonight? Not, Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Councilor McDonald?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes.
Councilor Mullen?
Yes.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Councilor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you folks. And communications from city staff. Keith?
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing this evening.
Okay. Well, here we go with something this evening. Um, we need to appoint a pro temp city manager. Uh, Keith is leaving us essentially first of October. Um, and so we need to do something with, with that position. Um, we reached out to the attorneys about how to do this. And um, city charter section thirty-four bracket B provides, "The mayor must appoint and may remove the manager only with the consent of the majority of the existing council members. The appointment must be made without regard to political considerations" and so on and so forth. Education experience, okay. Um, Ross says, "I recommend that the city fill the position of city manager on a temporary basis while conducting this."
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Do you mind if I?
No, um, I'm actually going to stop you from reading that because I don't believe that that's uh, something that we are privileged to read.
And why not?
It's confidential.
It's right at the top of your paper on the right-hand side.
Doesn't have to be confidential.
I would, I would like to request that the council, um,
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty. The document uh, does state that it's confidential communication, and it should only take place in executive session.
No, but it, the attorney told me it didn't have to be. I was free, I was free to discuss this with the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just reading what it says.
What's that? I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm just reading what it says.
Well, that's what I'm doing.
Oh, so Alyssa, so can we talk about this? Is this something we talk about right now? Or, I mean, it's on the agenda, but?
Yeah, you can talk about the topic. Um, I'm not sure that, I, I think the mayor was referring to something that's, was in the charter. Um, so I guess quoting the charter, that is a public document. The memo itself is confidential. Um, but we can, you guys can talk about the topic this evening publicly.
Right. The, the only reason I stopped you, Mr. Mayor, was just because I, you were reading from the, the document past that point, so I, um,
Of course, I wouldn't have been able to read the word confidential, so I wouldn't have any clue on that one. God bless America. All right, let's discuss the idea of filling the position of city manager on a temporary basis. Okay? Just as a discussion topic.
Sure.
Okay. So you folks have read this. Um, I've got a copy of it.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a copy.
Hmm. I emailed it out last week, um, and didn't make it to you?
Didn't make it to me.
Okay.
Do you have any extra copies of it?
I do not. Would you?
Do you have an extra copy?
No, he doesn't.
I can even try forwarding it to you again.
Yeah, in fact, I'm looking now, and I don't have an email from you since the twenty-third of August, so.
That's a concern, and I will have to get with our IT department. You know, our emails updated, our email addresses?
I didn't know anything about that, no.
Okay.
I will help you with that. Um, after the meeting, I, maybe the mayor, could you maybe share your copy with him for, for the moment? And uh, that would explain why you haven't gotten any emails here.
Yep, that'll do it.
The old system still. So, but let's get you a copy there. Do you want me to grab it?
Okay, you folks want to discuss, let's discuss. We need to get a temporary city manager. You're giving my copy. I don't want to do any of this anyway, so.
Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Mayor, I was,
If you'd like to interrupt, nobody interrupts you, but you feel free to just jump in on anything that, that you think up. Enough for now. You discuss. Let's get a temporary city manager.
Mr. Mayor, that, that was, my intent was not to offend you, but what, it was to
Just, let's get it done. Come on, folks. We don't need to be here all night again.
Okay, so my, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that you bring a candidate forward?
Can I, can I share? Do you have your copy with you?
Yeah. So we should, but then we're supposed to talk about who?
So there isn't really like a policy on, on this, but we could discuss, just following it as if we would do for appointing any, you know, any other process, which I am in favor of. I think that's a good decision.
We don't want to do that because that might violate something.
You can't read it specifically.
Can I read a little bit? "In order to set out, clearly set out the intention of the mayor and councillors to the appointment of a temporary city manager, I recommend that the mayor present his candidate as one on a limited duration pro temp city manager position. I would then also recommend that the council's motion consenting to the appointment also state that the position is a pro temp position." Okay? Here we are.
Okay, so how do we, but how do we choose someone for a temporary position? Is the question, right?
So there, there's different options that, that can happen. You can appoint, you can ask somebody from outside of, of, of the city of Staton, or you can ask from some, uh, somebody, uh, ask for somebody within, or appoint someone from within the city of Staton. Um, it's my understanding that um, we have a few individuals that are, would be um, good candidates for a job like this in a temporary basis that are already in, uh, are on our city staff. Um, and the, the two names that were mentioned to me were um, our own Alyssa over there and Susanna.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Council Patty. Uh, are any other candidates interested from city administration besides those two aforementioned individuals, to your knowledge?
No.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty again. Alyssa, has any kind of formal notification gone out to the administrative team, uh, management team as far as any interested parties of this, or has this just been word of mouth at this point?
Sorry. I, I didn't unmute my own self. Um, I have had a conversation with the mayor.
Okay. And then, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty again. Any other councillors heard from any other interested parties?
Um, I, I got those names from a sit-down that I had with Keith last week of um, people that would be, that seemed like they would be prepared for that type of a job.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is Council reporter. Uh, just because I'm curious, Lance, are you still on the call? Are you interested in this as well?
Really, any, anyone that's on the call.
I am on the call, and uh, you know, I just find it interesting that the other two names you brought up, and I wasn't, I didn't even know anything about this, to be quite honest, so. This is a total shock. I don't even know when Keith's last day is, so I, I didn't know we were trying to replace him this quickly. This is all kind of news, so um, I would have a little thing on that, Council Patty. Sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate you expressing your intention there.
Yeah. Keith's last day is the twenty-third, correct?
It, it's Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's fast approaching.
So is there any kind of distribution list through email that would go out to all the city staff?
Yes, we do have something like that.
Maybe it could be a two-phase thing that as a, as an interim, until the position is filled on a temporary basis, that somebody could do some kind of work out of class?
That, that's essentially what, what this is, is appointing someone to take that temporary.
But until that's selected, the, the duty, the day-in, day-out duties will just have to be absorbed by whoever's in the front office. Right? I mean, that, that's actually a question, right? Just like anything else, right? Like if somebody vacates a position, the, whatever those, whatever those duties are to a certain extent.
The, the difference here is Keith is kind of like the CEO and um, and
Yeah, they're not that important.
And it, it's, this why, I tell you. Um, it, so he's, he's got the ability to sign contracts, um, execute contracts, that sort of thing. And so with him going, it leaves someone not in that position temporarily. Um, as many of you probably know, except for maybe Ben, because Ben is not on the email apparently, um, I have sent out emails to recruiting agencies similar to what I had done a couple of years ago, asking them to submit proposals, and we're expecting those to be back. Um, I, I put a due date of October eighth so that we can start that review and hopefully get a recruitment agency selected.
But that's for the permanent fill?
Right. And so at least getting that process going. Yes.
And I did that on my own.
Yeah, there
We need to get something going.
To, to get that going, the mayor asked me to start the um, process of gathering proposals. The final decision will be, will come before council to make the choice of which recruitment agency to choose.
So the city of Kaiser went through this recently, and, and they did a couple of different steps. So they, they appointed a like pro temp, limited duration person from within their own agency. Um, and then they actually, uh, because the process was going to take longer than they expected to get a candidate to come in, which could be a, a factor for us, they then um, hired a, an interim, like an actual interim, until they hired their new city manager. So I don't know if they actually hired a new city manager, but they did do like almost three steps there. They, the pro temp, which basically just takes over the duties while you start the process. If it's gonna take too long, then you can bring in maybe someone that has greater experience for a temporary um, time, which often the people in other cities will ta, ask someone that is retired uh, or something to, to see if they'll come in and, and provide that role for a little bit. Um,
I, I can add on, I just want to add on to what you're saying about the interim. From the outside, I actually was told this past week, um, there was a COG, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments luncheon last week, and um, they talked about how many openings for city managers are in the area. And there's actually a shortage of interims out there. Um, so just to put that out there, I mean, it is an option that the council could try, um, but there is a shortage. I think that there's two in the area, but they're not available.
Yeah. I would say like, what my vision, just only speaking for myself, would be is uh, that, you know, we appoint someone that um, is from within uh, for the pro temp position, limited duration, and then continue on with our, our recruitment process for the city manager. And if it looks like it's going to take, you know, too long, then we aggressively try to find an interim if we feel that that may be a better option for us, if it's even an option. Um, but I, I, I firmly believe based off of what I've seen our city staff do, that we have many people that are capable of taking on this role. Um, but we also have to remember that um, the person who takes this role on um, would probably have to be someone that doesn't want to apply for the position, um, for the actual position of city manager, because they will be, they, they should be removed from that process, because they'll be involved in recruiting, because they'll be managing all those affairs. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Alyssa, 'cause?
No, you are very correct. Um, the, it would be best to not have your uh, pro temp or interim as a candidate, who, well, wanting to be a candidate for the position. Um, and likewise, um, why we're looking at hiring a recruiting agency also, is it really falls into their hands, and they'll be running the process as well. Um, you know, I handle HR, so I'll have some involvement in it, but not quite what I would if it was a different type of position that we were hiring.
Yeah. And when, and when someone is an internal candidate uh, that's applying, so if we have a city staff member that actually wants to apply for the position of city manager, and then we hire a recruitment agency, our candidate pool is then we hire a recruitment agency, our candidate pool is going to be so, so low, because when people know that there's an internal person, um, applying, they automatically assume that person is gonna get it and they don't even try to apply. Um, that's, that's what I've heard from, uh, from Keith as what happens, you know, he talks to a lot of, a lot of different cities with his organizations that he's involved in. So, um, that's something to consider, too, that
Councillor Hook, did you look at the email that you sent on the 20th, which is today at 5:00 this evening?
Yes, from, yes, uh, I did see that right before
What's that first line say?
I don't have it open, so... Right. That, that's where I'm getting at, um, with, with this, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly where I'm kind of getting at with this, but I think that first we have to decide as a council, are we going to go through with the normal procedures that we normally do to have people appointed to things? Are we all comfortable with, um, the mayor making the appointment and then us voting on his, uh, um, who he presents as, as like a candidate for the pro temp position?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I beat ya. About like one second. Oh, real quick, my inputs on this, I agree with Councillor Hook. I think it should be somebody internal. I think that if you tried to bring somebody external, by the time they get up to speed, we'll probably be ready to do an actual, uh, permanent hire. Um, so I would recommend that it's internal. I would recommend that, you know, some people, um, it could be demoralizing if they don't have an opportunity to, to throw their name in the hat, so I would just, you know, uh, be aware of that. Um, but whoever it is, I would recommend that it's somebody who can get up and running very, very quickly, that understands the nuances, that understands the current responsibilities really, really well. So that's my recommendation. And then, yeah, going on forward with the, um, with the full-time hire.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Councillor Paddy.
Councillor, hang on a second.
Okay.
Look at City Charter, Section 34, Bracket B, City.
Can you read it for us, Mr. Mayor?
It's in that letter. I, I gave my copy to Councillor O. A temporary, right?
Yep.
But Lead on, Councillor.
I'm just saying that, that we don't have a policy in place for, we don't have an official policy in place of how a pro temp city manager is selected. So that's, that's like the main, we have one for when
What the Charter says.
Well, the Charter says about removing, um, removing a city manager. We're not removing
Read on.
What, what am I reading on?
Section 34B.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading that, Mr. Mayor.
You haven't written out yet. Surprisingly, I want this process to be as smooth as possible.
Well, I don't, so I don't know I don't know if the City Charter, Section 34B specifically talks about the pro temp temp city manager.
It would fit in this, in this situation, wouldn't it?
Yes.
What I'm hoping that we can do is, is just agree that, what, the process of the mayor appointing, um,
Pro temp?
That, appointing a city manager as stated in the City Charter, we could also follow that same guideline for a temporary pro temp city manager, just for simplicity of it, since that's something that we, that we already do, that it's been voted on by, uh, it's very similar to what's already been voted on by the residents of Staton. Um, so I don't know how, how all of you feel about that, 'cause I think we have to make a decision on how we want to do that, right?
I, I believe what legal counsel was getting to was, because there's not a specific appointment of a pro temp in the Charter, that you can follow the same sort of process of, um, doing it for, uh, temporary.
Right.
And, um, that the mayor can make the suggestion of an appointment.
Uh, Mr.
And then it has to be ratified. Sorry, Councillor Paddy.
And, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Councillor Paddy. I did have a thought that I wanted to share earlier, and it's been moved on past. Uh, I just wanted to go ahead and state, I, I do like Councillor Hook's plan, um, about finding an interim if that's necessary, even though there's a shortage. Hopefully we don't have to do that. Uh, however, I think that if we're gonna appoint a pro temp out of the city staff, which I agree with that, uh, I just wanna make sure that, uh, all interested parties have a, a second to consider that and, and throw their name in the hat, so to speak, so that the mayor knows what his applicant pool is to make that decision. That would be my hope individually as a councillor. Um, so I just wanted to share that real quick.
Yeah, I, I think that that is, it's good to consider all, all of the great staff that we have. Could we also maybe, because of the short timeframe that we have, and that we don't have any meetings scheduled between now and Friday, when it, that's Keith's last day, could we consider all of those individuals, um, could we, could we ask them to let us know if they would be interested in an interim position? And then we could, uh, they could, uh, apply for that, like, interim position if we needed that? And we could then weigh all of their qualifications? And this, this pro temp one is really just, we need someone that we know can do the job until we either get an interim or we get, uh, an actual city manager. It's a very temporary thing. And so if this drags out longer, we probably should look into, uh, like a whole matrix of, of looking at qualifications and things like that. Because I, I don't wanna step on city staff toes or hurt feelings either, because we have very talented staff at the city. Um, but I, I'm hoping that we can at least make a decision tonight on who the pro temp one will be, even if we decide to go interim after that, just so that we don't have to do an emergency meeting.
You wanna go ahead and suggest it, or I could do it? But I don't know. You, you kinda like to run these things, so go ahead on it.
Mayor Porter, that, that's really inappropriate.
No, it's not inappropriate. It's our relationship, which is nothing. And I have put up with it for two and a half
That's really
Mr. Mayor, point order decorum, like, really, all night tonight, Mr. Mayor, please. Enough.
Okay. Do you wanna go ahead and make a suggestion?
Yeah. Uh, this is my choice. She's the one that can step into the job and do the job and guide us through this process smoothly and, um, and legally, and it'll be, it'll be a good thing. And she'll work fine as a temporary. She doesn't intend to apply for the open position, which she stated in an email this evening. And so that's my recommendation.
I think that's a very good recommendation.
So when you make a motion on that?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I move that we appoint Alyssa Angelo for the limited duration pro temp city manager position, sorry, and that the mayor, uh, be authorized to, um, put into place an employment agreement for this position, which will then document, uh, the duties of the job, uh, put into place a salary and label it, label the position as limited duration.
That pretty well covers it, yeah. Unemployment agreement, right. With the expectations that she would return to her regular position once the, um, regular city manager position is, is assumed. Sounds good. That was in form of a motion, Councillor?
Yes, sir.
And was there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Discussion, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
This is Councillor Paddy. I just wanna go ahead and voice some displeasure with the way this process went tonight. I would have liked to see that city staff had an appropriate amount of time to know that this was an option available to them. Um, not that I don't think Alyssa Angelo would be a particularly good city manager pro temp for the time being, but I just think that, uh, in the interest of transparency, uh, I, I just wanna voice that I'm displeased with how this went this evening.
Others?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna echo what Councillor Paddy said. I, only because we're on a short timeline, I feel like we need to make a decision right now, and I seconded the motion because I believe that Alyssa would do a great job, and for all the, um, other city staff, I, I would have hoped that they would have maybe known about it and had the opportunity, but under their circumstances, um, I think we need to get this done tonight.
Well, well, well said, I think. This is a quick, easy continuation, a smooth transition. Yeah, there are probably others, there may have been others in the staff that would have liked to apply for this, but, uh, that drags it out. Now, we worked on it a few weeks. We sit there in a kind of limbo. Things are happening, and, um, this gets us, again, an orderly transition and a smooth one. So, that's why, it is not, it's not some snap thing or off the cuff. This is, uh, this has been well considered for the last, for me at least, for the last couple of weeks, so.
Mayor Porter?
I'm surprised that none of you made any contact about, about what was gonna happen once Keith was gone.
I didn't know, so.
No phone calls, mail, emails, nothing. And that's why I went ahead and told Alyssa to go ahead and let's get this recruitment process started. And contacted Ross how to make a smooth transition here. That's why they're new.
Well, thank you for doing that, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a, I don't know if we should wait until after we do this motion, but I would like to talk about what that process looks like in hiring a new city manager, so if that needs to be after we vote on this, that's fine with me, but I would like to make that comment.
Mayor Porter?
So how do you wanna get that?
Mayor Porter?
Yes?
Are we still in?
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I was hoping we could take this time, that's why I put the motion forward right now, so that we could have open discussion of, do we want to extend out to, um, staff for, um, like a more interim, like an invitation to let us know if they want, if they were interested in, in the actual interim position, in the event that this is going to drag on a little bit longer, um, where we could then look at their qualifications as a council. The pro temp really is just very, a very temporary position. It's meant to be very short.
Can I clear, can you clarify, like, you know, we didn't really discuss what that timeframe looks like. Do we know what a, what that should be before we consider a? The recruitment process can be anywhere from three to four months. Um, it depends. It can move real quickly, depending how quickly we're able to move as, um, a group, and, uh, but, and, and depending, you know, the council also shouldn't feel pressured, um, to hire someone who's not right for the position, right? And so if it's, if it needs to extend further beyond then, that, then that could be, um, a longer period, um, we're just not gonna know until we get into it.
That's what we did the last time we hired Keith. It was a, kind of a long-term search. And it worked. I think everyone would agree with that.
So if it's, if it's longer than, than four months, should we be, is that one we should be considering? What do we call it? An interim, interim?
I think we could revisit it at every council meeting and see, like, just, just talk about it for a couple of minutes and see how everyone thinks that it's going, maybe, um, and just see if we need to, to look for an interim at that point or not, based on how fast or slow the recruitment process starts and
Well said.
I, I also wanted to put out there that, the individual that the motion is, is on is not going to be applying for the position, so that's another reason why that name was not applying for the, the actual city manager position. So that, you know, we don't, we don't know about other staff members either, whether they want, want to or don't want to, um.
I like the idea of offering, opening it up to the other staff for, for an interim if we need a longer, a longer term
Yeah.
Person in that position.
I would agree with that.
This just keeps the day to day going.
Point, point being that we don't know if we're gonna need an interim yet, correct?
For what, I'm sorry?
We don't, we don't know that we're going to need an interim city manager yet, so there's no reason to make a decision on that tonight.
Yeah, but could, could we, like
Drag things out? May come to that, we don't know. You're right.
Could we still invite staff to let us know, or let the mayor and, and Councillor Ort know, um, if they are interested in a potential interim position, um, that they wanna be considered?
Does anyone here wanna be considered as interim city manager?
No, for the city staff.
For the city staff? Like, let, if they wanted to send you or, or Councillor Ort, 'cause she's council president, um, an email to, to let you know that there's even an interest in it. That way, it's, you know, only in a couple of people's hands, and, um, then you guys will be able to know that information, that there are other people that are interested. If we do have the discussion, then that information will be available for all of us to discuss, that there's more people interested in the city.
I guess, that's, that's down the road. It's kinda like some other things we've discussed over the last few weeks and months. Let's, let's try this and see how it goes. We can talk about it every meeting, if you want. I wouldn't like to get us involved in a hard timeline of if we can't find a new city manager in 90 days or 120 days, that we, we cast about for an interim, and, uh, yeah, I, I, I just wouldn't like that, myself.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Alyssa, so if you move into this position, then, or not, I guess move into it, but if you take over these responsibilities, um, who will then help you, like, run the meetings type of thing? You'll, you'll probably see he's still sitting right here, running the meetings. I mean, we, we don't have assistants, and I have worked with Susanna, and we've, um, discussed after the mayor had indicated that he was, uh, wanting to appoint me, um, of what, what things I can let go of temporarily, um, that other staff members can help me with, and, um, to make sure that I'm successful in just getting us through this period while we're, um, seeking. And, you know, I've, I've been working closely with Keith as the assistant city manager now for a while, and so I feel like he's prepared me as much as one can to step in temporarily to the position. Um, stress that, temporarily, and, um, you know, I'm happy to, to help the city out in, in the interim while we search and find that right candidate to fill his shoes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
This is Councillor Paddy. Alyssa, how many months do you feel like you can sustain that, though? That's, I guess, my big question in the statement you just made.
Well, I can tell you that I will be very honest, and I will communicate with the mayor and the council. If I feel like it's gonna be too much, then, you know, I would be upfront about that. You know, my family, they're aware of what's going on and, um, supportive, and, um, you know, I have their backing. And, you know, I have their backing on it as well. And so I, I feel confident in that we're going to be successful in moving forward here. And, but yeah, I would definitely, I wouldn't not speak up if I thought that it would be a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've got a comment from the chief over here.
Chief, good evening. Yeah, this, this is always a big moment for any city. It's a big deal to deal with. I think the one thing that hasn't been said yet by at least me as a department head, I do know some of my other fellow department heads, we're here as a team. And in these moments, leadership is coming together and helping each other out, not who's just in charge. I think you have, in my short time here, you have that team established currently. And I think Alyssa will get any support she needs from any of the department heads. If she gets to a point where she, if she's saying it's starting to get there, we're there for her. And then that's where you guys at that point in time can then say, hey, is there somebody else within? Mr. Fly isn't joining me. The rest of the, one of the other department heads may be able to step up, who has other resources to help and spread that workload about. I would also say that I would ask of council during this point of transition that it will be harder to get some of the demands and requests that you have, and even from our community members. And that takes time. There's other resources out there, just like the Chiefs of Police program. I'm with you today because of the linebacker program where they have basically executives that can step in. I'm going to kill this fly, I really am, to help out. I think three to four months is probably a very quick process. I can tell you, just trying to hire police officers is extremely hard. So we, I would be prepared to look at a six or eight month process in the long run, trying to find qualified candidates. The industry, city managers are like police officers right now and some of the other stuff. It's just not a really wanted position because of the demands that are asked of them. And it may be hard. We may get lucky and get somebody really quick. So I think being flexible and putting some trust within all the department heads a little bit, that we will support each other, support the community as we have, and support you throughout this is something I wanted to say, and I think it needed to be said. So thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for that.
Okay, anything else? Let's go with this then, if we can. Alyssa, poll the council, please, on that motion.
Okay. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Hmm, no, I'm just kidding. Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
An enthusiastic yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, folks. One last thing this evening. I get a letter from Counselor Mullen tonight submitting his resignation as of the first of October. From this chair, he will be keenly missed. So we get to start, I'll get to advertise for a council position, applications for that, too. So we get hit with the double whammy here tonight and this next week. So I guess we can put the word out on social media?
Yes, we can pull up the process that we've done in the past, which is getting the word out there on social media, on our website, email, every way that I can.
Applications will be used, we'll pick some of it.
Yeah, we, we don't have a newsletter coming up until November, December. But if we haven't moved forward on that, we can definitely put it in there also, because I know people do read that.
Okay, all right. Sorry to see you go. Best wishes.
So I would just say, you know, the work we do is hard. The work we do is thankless. I learned a lot. I've appreciated all of your different perspectives and insights. And I think because of the thanklessness sometimes of this work, the pressure, the stress can get to you. And those personal differences can trickle into this meeting. And, you know, it's, it's incumbent upon us to sometimes set those things aside and focus on, on the work that we're trying to do. And I know you will. I know you will continue to be successful. I look forward to continued relationships with all of you. And thank you for supporting me, and thank you for assisting me and helping me understand so much of this complexity. But it's, it's been an absolute honor to work with you, Mayor. You council members, and I'll miss you. I'll miss Staton.
Thank you, Coach.
Counselor Mullen, I just wanted to say that I was proud to vote for you, and it's been great working with you. You'll be missed.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I also want to thank you for your service, Counselor Mullen. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Keith Campbell for his services to the community since 2014. I mean, he's been through so much with all of us and seen our ups and downs. And I think he's truly Staton, and he'll be going there with all the knowledge and expertise he's gained here and, you know, the experiences and character of Staton. And I just wanted to thank him for his time here and, and all the city staff for their service in these pretty turbulent times.
Mr. Mayor? I'm kind of at a loss for words tonight, but I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow counselors. And Counselor Mullen, thank you. Thank you, Keith.
I was hoping to put off Keith's resignation for another year so someone else would find a new city manager, but it's come to us. Maybe end us and so forth. I just get after it as best I can. You're lucky to be here.
I think it's going to be hard to find a city manager better than Keith.
The council of governors was trying to find five of them as of the first of September, when I had a meeting with area mayors to try to count the mayors. And the public said, oh, we're looking for five city managers in the area. And I thought, wow, why not throw our name into this? Get on the shorter, longer list, and others have looked for us. And we did, and that's when we decided to put out those inquiries, proposals for service and try to move this along.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, folks, for that. Yes.
Well, speaking of that process, Alyssa, can we just run through that? I have, I've had some community members kind of asking what that process looks like, if there is like a general job description and qualifications that we can see or the community can look at, or?
So the city manager position is kind of a different position than maybe what you might see with the general job descriptions like mine or the chief's or someone working in our front office. So the municipal code and the charter lay out kind of what the city manager does. The position description piece, qualifications, everything is really probably going to come from you as a council and if includes staff's, staff's input. And we've kind of talked about this, and that it's important to have your guys' input and hear from the staff of what is it that we need from a city manager? And so once we get a recruitment agency on board, that's when we're really going to dig in and figure out what is it that the council wants to see? What do they want to find in a new city manager? And that's where you're going to lay out, you know, do you want someone who's credentialed? Do you want a master's? Is that preferred? How many years of local government experience are you looking for? All of that is going to come as we get that executive recruiter hired. And they'll really start working with us in the beginning to put that, that, those items together.
Some of that community involved will come at that point, yeah?
Yeah, that'll be part of the process. What, what I've asked for from the recruitment agencies is to send me a list of what their processes look like. Who have they done hiring processes for nationwide or, and specifically in the Northwest? What, what does their process look like? And then we can go from there. And I know it's been a couple of years, and not everybody, I know Ben wasn't here the last time that we went through looking at the recruitment agencies. But they'll send their proposals. I'll go through, I've got like ten questions that I look for as I review them. And then I'll bring the top three forward. But we'll have a little bit of legwork in the beginning as a council and probably staff to really sit down and hammer out those details of what, what's our dream city manager going forward.
And is it after we hire the recruiter that we can sit down and tell them, like, that, like our wishes of, we want staff to be heavily involved in, in letting us know what, what they need? And also maybe part of like an interview round as well? Maybe inviting a few community leaders in, maybe like former mayor that we've had? Or I think there's a couple of them. Scott, was Scott Vigil also mayor once before? And Gary, Jerry Abboud? Maybe inviting like some, some of them?
There definitely will be a chance to include stakeholders and, and just involve the public in different ways. Definitely in that process. We're just, once we get to that final choosing of what it is that we want, what the council wants to do with the recruiter, then we'll really start digging into what that's all going to look like.
Yeah, I, for me, my greatest fear is just that we're not, that we're not going to include staff enough and that they're, they're not going to feel like Staton is the right fit for them anymore. We have a great team, and I would hate to lose even one of them.
We do. We have an excellent team. And so I think that they would be more than willing to jump in and help the council and give their input as well. I, I know that that would be important to them. Thank you. And if you guys think of any other questions with regard to the hiring process, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to answer it. And I, yeah. And hopefully by the second meeting in October, we'll be coming, I'll be coming forward with a recommendation of at least the top three for you to choose from.